In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cec, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Star Ledger, Nuevo Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luso Americano newspapers, and by distribution to administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A copy of this meeting notice was forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is the Board Reorganization Meeting, Tuesday, April 30, 2019, 6:14. Stand for the flag salute, please. Mr. Bledsoe?
Present.
Ms. Gaddy?
Present.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Haynes? Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Norton?
Present.
Ms. Owens?
Present.
Mr. Padilla?
Present.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
We have a quorum. Next we have recognition for outgoing board members. Would you like to do that?
Good evening. We have a very special, two very special recognitions that we are doing at this time. Good evening. And the first recognition goes to Deborah Kim Gaddy. Ms. Gaddy, will you please come forward? Whereas, Deborah Kim Gaddy is a lifelong committed resident of Newark, New Jersey, and a proud alumnus of Weekbreak High School. Served as an elected board member with distinction, supporting students, staff, and constituents of the Newark Public Schools. Was elected in '93, and then again in '95, appointed by the state, and then re-elected again in 2016. Her time as a board member has chaired the Community Engagement Committee and was vice-chairperson of the Operations Committee. She has served as a member of the Personnel, Finance, Program, and Instruction Committees. In addition, she was a member of the Committee to Select the First Superintendent to Lead the District after returning to local control. Whereas she has dedicated her life and career to focusing on environmental justice. Her illustrious career as an environmental advocate began in 2001. Whereas, her journey into community service began as an aide to former Newark Council President and South Ward Councilman, the Honorable Donald Bradley, later working for as Chief of Staff to the Councilwoman-at-Large, Melzred Crump. She is former Chair of the Newark Environmental Commission and member of the Environmental Issues Advisory Council. Whereas she is a proud, dedicated, and supportive mother of Sonny Frankie, Monet, and Julian. Now, getting it right. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Newark Board of Education does hereby commend and applaud Ms. Deborah Kim Gaddy, and do hereby recognize her in the presence of her family, colleagues, and friends by dedicating this proclamation in honor of her hard work, dedication, commitment, and accomplishments as a proud and distinguished member of the Newark Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, board member, the Honorable Leah Owens. Whereas, Leah Z. Owens has been a lifetime resident of Newark, New Jersey. She earned a Bachelor's Degree in English from Duke University, and a Master's Degree in Public Administration, and is currently a doctoral candidate at Rutgers University Newark focused on urban systems. Served as a board member with distinction, supporting students, staff, and constituents of the Newark Public Schools from 2016. Ms. Owens has a passion for education. This led her to serve as the Chairperson of the Program and Instruction Committee for two years, and Vice Chairperson for one year to ensure that instructional programs are educationally and culturally appropriate. She most recently served as Vice Chairperson of the Board Development and Governance Committee. In addition, Ms. Owens was a member of the Committee to Select the First Superintendent to Lead the District after returning to local control. Whereas Ms. Owens, according to her educational philosophy, equity plus justice equals equality, Ms. Owens has dedicated her life to fighting for educational justice. As an educator, activist, organizer, she has a deep commitment to ensuring equal education for all children. Whereas Ms. Owens was an employee of the Newark Public Schools, and might I add, she did that with distinction. She took on many leadership roles, including writing culturally relevant curriculum, developing an engaging after-school program, producing a school-wide Black History Month Assembly, presenting at district-wide professional development meetings, and co-writing a grant to take students on an overnight field trip to Salem, Massachusetts. Whereas she continues to impart knowledge to others as an adjunct professor at Rutgers University, Newark, Essex County Community College, and New Jersey City University. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Newark Board of Education does hereby commend and applaud Ms. Owens, and do hereby recognize her in the presence of her family, colleagues, and friends by dedicating this proclamation in honor of her hard work, dedication, commitment, and accomplishments as a proud and distinguished member of the Newark Board of Education. Congratulations.
Next we will announce the results of the annual school election, which was conducted on April 16, 2019. A total of 19,477 votes were cast for 11 candidates for the position of Member of the Board of Education. The numbers of votes which were cast for each of the board of the candidates were: Adorian Murray Thomas, 4,935. Shavon Anderson, 4,542. Taev Padilla, 4,420. Leah Owens, 1,466. Sophia Jenkins, 1,223. Denise Cole, 1,165. Yolanda Johnson, 592. Maggie Freeman, 360. Priscilla M. Garcas-Guevara, 295. Denise Ann Crawford, 274. Arlene J. Ramsey, 180. As a result of those votes, the candidates elected to the office of board member are Adorian Murray Thomas, Shavon Anderson, and Taev Padilla. We'll now administer the oath of office to each of the three board members just elected. And we're gonna do that down there. Any order, you can come down, whatever order you want. You wanna come first?
May first.
Okay. May first, Ms. Anderson first?
No, Ms. Murray Thomas.
Excuse me. Thank you. I just wanna thank all the members of Newark, our great community, for the support given to me over the previous three years as a board member. I am still a parent of a child at Arts High School, so I'll still be around and involved. In life, you are given certain opportunities. I was blessed with the opportunity to be elected right before the state took over, appointed back when the state had control, and then to be elected once we had local control. So my circle is complete. And I truly am blessed that I had that opportunity, and I also know that God has always blessed me with the serenity to understand the things I cannot change. He gives me the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. And so with that, I step out, and I continue to do the work that I've always done, because I don't need titles to do the work. All I need is the will and the ability from God. So thank each and every one of you for your support. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddy. Ms. Owens?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Kim. Thought I'd be standing. So, thank you. I could be here all night if I were to call out specific people, so I just want to say thank you to everyone. In this election, there was unity, but not around money or false choice. We united around a vision for education: Children Over Politics. A poem by Alice Walker sums up my board tenure nicely. It's entitled "Be Nobody's Darling." Be nobody's darling, be an outcast. Take the contradictions of your life and wrap around you like a shawl to parry stones to keep you warm. Watch the people succumb to madness with ample cheer. Look them askance at you, and you askance reply. Be an outcast. Be pleased to walk alone, uncool, or line the crowded riverbeds with other impetuous fools. Make a merry gathering on the bake where thousands perish for brave, hurt words they said. Be nobody's darling, be an outcast. Qualified to live among your dead. An outcast. What if we saw each other not as sworn moral enemies, but worthy political adversaries? We are all good people. We love, and we are loved. It's within the political which we differ. A focus on being wrong, as in a bad person, is where name-calling and bullying stems from. She's difficult. Cold for she has too much to say. She's elitist. Cold for she can and does think for herself. She's not a team player. Cold for she can't be controlled. I am, in fact, a team player. I just don't play for the team status quo, and going along to get along. I am on the team of equitable, just, accountable, and quality education for every single child in Newark. What's wrong about me is that I have the wrong politics, in that I depart from the dominant politics. I don't subscribe to racist, patriarchal, sexist, or neoliberal agendas for education. I use myself as example, but this applies to so many more people in this city, several of whom are sitting in this audience or watching on their screens. Political outcasts. There is a sore lack of spaces for a radical democracy in this city, where differences can be and are discussed. Even so, I find the school board to be a place for radical democracy. It is a space where I work with those who think differently from me, and I'm a better person and citizen for it. I thank my board colleagues, the administrators, and the superintendent, all past and present. Children Over Politics. On the campaign trail, we asked the question, "You down with C-O-P?" I am, and I'm also down with C-O-L-E. Commitment over loyalty every time. Loyalty, while it has its place, is steeped in irrational emotions, the kind that are tied to insecurity and compromise the gains made. How do we sustain a movement after loyalty evaporates? Commitment. Commitment is radical. The emotions are political emotions, righteous anger, and the kind that allow you to stand solid in your place because your eyes are on the prize. My commitment remains steadfast: to children and families, to democratic public schools which are publicly funded and publicly managed, to my undying faith in the people. Thank you for your faith in me. I was offered this opportunity, and I took it, not to serve myself, but to serve others. And I'm a better person and citizen for it. I thank the supporters of Children Over Politics. We've always had local control. This campaign demonstrated both that and our strength. We're going to keep this going. Each and every time you step to the mic, attend a meeting, submit testimony, let it be known you are committed to Children Over Politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. We'll now do the oath of office. I'll call for Ms. Anderson first. This way we have enough. You can read it, you can hold that. Have you read this before? You can hold that.
I can see it.
Brenda?
Yes.
If board member Anderson can have her family come up with her while she gets sworn in, please.
One of you wanna hold the Bible? I, Shavon Anderson.
I, Shavon Anderson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And this state, under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Shavon Anderson.
I, Shavon Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of a Board of Education.
For the office of Member of the Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 1941.
Pursuant to RS 1941.
Or disqualified due to a conviction.
Or disqualified due to a conviction.
Of a crime or offense.
Of a crime or offense.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of this office.
Perform all the duties of this office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Before the meeting is over, you'll need to sign. Congratulations, everybody. Ms. Murray Thomas?
Oh, yeah. There you go up there.
You can take that one. Who wants to hold the Bible? You hold that? I, Adorian Murray Thomas.
I, Adorian Murray Thomas.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Adorian Murray Thomas.
I, Adorian Murray Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of a Member of a Board of Education.
Prescribed by law for the office of Member of Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to revised Statute 1941.
Pursuant to revised Statute 1941.
Or disqualified.
Or disqualified.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of this office.
Perform all the duties of this office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Go ahead and do the picture. Mr. Padilla? Who wants to hold the Bible? Have somebody, you don't have enough hands. I, Taev Padilla.
I, Taev Padilla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and this state.
To the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Taev Padilla.
I, Taev Padilla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a Member of a Board of Education.
For the office of the Board, for the office of the Member of the Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to revised Statute 1941.
Prudent to revised Statute 19:01, 401.
Or disqualified.
Or disqualified.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of this office.
Perform all the duties of this office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, thank you. You have to sign, and they'll take your picture doing that. Next on the agenda are greetings from the principals. Ms. Johnson here.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Leon, Deputy Superintendent Fitzhugh, School Business Administrator Wilson, General Counsel List, esteemed board members, community members, Newark Board of Education colleagues, and our Elliott family members that are here this evening. It is my pleasure to welcome you to Elliott Street School, home of the Eagles, and to present each member of the day's with a small token of appreciation, which I hope you found at your seat. I'd also like to congratulate the newly-elected board members. We look forward to collaborating with you as we continue to move our district forward. Tonight, we'd like to highlight Elliott's new Visual and Performing Arts Program. As many of you know, our population has doubled in size since 2016, when we opened the doors to our beautiful new school. What you may not know is that in less than three years, we have advanced our Visual and Performing Arts Program to include clubs such as ceramics- What you may not know is that in less than three years, we have advanced our visual and performing arts program to include clubs such as ceramics, studio art, band, dance, steam, and many more. We've partnered with some amazing community organizations such as Alvin Ailey, Dancin' on the Edge, Umoja Dance Studio, NJ PAC Musical Theater, and Shakespeare of New Jersey, just to name a few. Our students have performed for the past two years at both the All-City Music Festival and the All-City Dance Festival. In fact, two of our talented artists designed the artwork that graced the covers of both the dance and music programs. Twelve of our students were chosen to have their artwork featured at the NORC Hall of Records. And of those twelve, one student's painting was chosen by an esteemed panel to represent Essex County at the state exhibit in Trenton during the Youth Art Month March, and we are so proud of them. But of all of these accomplishments, we are most proud of our partnership with Mr. Sherrod Williams. If you do not know who Mr. Williams is, Mr. Williams is one of the Broadway performers from the hit musical Hamilton. Tonight, we have a special treat for you. Our new dance club, led by our amazing and phenomenal dance teacher, Ms. McAllister, will perform "The Room Where It Happened," which is inspired by the music from Hamilton.
...
Gentlemen of the jury, I'm curious, bear with me. Are you aware that we're making history? This is the first murder trial of our brand-new nation, the liberty behind deliberation. I intend to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt with my assistant counsel.
Oh, counsel Hamilton, sit down, a client. Let me reexpose innocent. Call your first witness. That's all you had to say.
Okay.
One more thing. Why do you assume you're the smartest in the room? Why do you assume you're the smartest in the room? Why do you assume you're the smartest in the room? Isn't that attitude maybe your doom?
Why do you ride like you're running out of time? Ride day and night like you're running out of time? Every day you fight like you're running out of time? Keep on fighting in the meantime.
We're in the same spot. You got more than you gave.
And I wanted what I got. When you got skin in the game, you stay in the game. But you don't get a win unless you play in the game. Oh, you get love for it, you get hate for it, you get nothing if you wait for it, wait for it, wait. God help and forgive me, I want to build something that's gonna outlive me. What do you want, girl? What do you want, girl? If you stand for nothing, girl, what do you fall for?
I want to be in the room where it happens, the room where it happens. I want to be in the room where it happens, the room where it happens. I. Where it happens. Where it happens. The room where it happens. I. I want to be in the room where it happens. Where it happens. I want to be in the room where it happens. Where it happens. I want to be in the room where it happens. I've got to be in the room where it happens. That big old room. The art of the compromise. Hold your nose and close your eyes. You want a leader to save the day. We don't get a say in what they trade away. We dream of a brand-new start. But we dream in the dark for the most part. Dark as a tune where it happens. I've got to be in the room where it happens. I've got to be. Where it happens. I've got to be. Where it happens. I've got to be in the room where it happens. I gotta be, I gotta be where it happens. I want to be in the room where it happens.
I want to give it up for my dance teacher, Ms. McAllister. Raise your hand. Great job, guys.
Great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that wonderful welcome to Elliott Street School. We'll now call the role of the newly organized Board of Education. Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Anderson here.
Present.
Okay. Mr. Bledsoe?
Present.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Haynes?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Norton?
Present.
Mr. Padilla?
Present.
We have a quorum. Would either of the new re-elected members like to make a comment? Or any other board members?
Ms. List?
Yes.
Yes. I would just like to welcome Board Member Anderson, welcome to our board. I look forward to working with you. And newly elected Board Member Murray Thomas, welcome. And of course, our re-elected Board Member Taeve, look forward to continue to working with you also. Thank you. Ms. List?
Mr. Padilla?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you everyone for coming out tonight. All board meetings should be this crowded. Place is absolutely packed. It's a great thing going forward. I'd like to thank my teammates, Adorian Murray Thomas and Siobhan Anderson, who really, you know, they're really stuck in there. They worked very hard to sit on this dais. I'd like to thank my Sunday group who are here. They're all scattered all the way in the back over there. I see them all. Come on, give us a clap, come on. Sunday group. My family, Michael Myers over here with my little niece Natalie who's sitting over there, my sister Donna who left, the mayor, the entire city council, freeholder Wayne Richardson, Assemblywoman Shannick Spade, Assemblywoman Eliana Pintor Marine, State Senator Teresa Ruiz for always backing me in my corner, to my Northwood Center family, I say thank you for always supporting me. And last but not least, my campaign manager, Mr. Sammy Gonzalez, who always, 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 always had me on the schedule, who always kept me busy, and, you know, I can't thank Sammy enough. But before I conclude with Sammy, I also want to, I also want to thank Minister Marquise Lewis, Dashay Carter, Minister Roundtree, South Ward, Chairman, PAC Council, I see all the way in the back over there. I thank you for all your support and I look forward to working with this group. I look forward to moving Newark schools forward, and thank you everyone for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Any other board members? Ms. Anderson?
I want to thank, first, my family for supporting me through this and to this, and I want to thank, there's so many people to thank, but I just want to thank everyone who supported me. I want to thank my team, Taeve, Padilla, and Adorian Murray Thomas. It was a pleasure to campaign with you and work with you, and I look forward to being on the board with you and also to my board colleagues. I look forward to working with you and I thank you for all your support through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, and the other board members. Ms. Murray Thomas?
First of all, good evening, everyone. I'd like to acknowledge everyone for coming out this evening and finding it not robbery to be here. I want to just thank everyone who made this part of my journey possible here to serve on the board. For those of you who know me and those of you who are getting to know me or got to know me with these past few months, you know that this is not my first rodeo with service. I have dedicated my life and I will continue to dedicate my life to making sure that I give to the city that's given so much to me. I am a daughter of this city. I would not be here if it weren't for the educators, the teachers, my parents, my family who've invested in me to be here today, and so I'm humbled and honored to pay that forward by serving on the board. I want to acknowledge the exiting board members who have served with distinction. I want to acknowledge my teammates who I ran with, Taeve Padilla and Siobhan. I want to acknowledge the entire, I mean, to go on and on, it would take much too many to acknowledge everyone who made this possible, but I could not, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the support from my personal team, my mother, Queen Dana, my co-campaign manager Dashay, Dashay Carter, a former school board member and champion of young people here in the city, and the mayor and the entire Mayor Baraka team and so many others, countless advisors and mentors, again, it would take too long. I want to close just by saying that I particularly chose to come up here to swear in with some of my mentees and my little nephews because it's a reminder of our duty here on this board, right? It's not about us, it's about the kids. It's about making sure they have everything they need to get to their next step, and it's not lost on me that we do these meetings in a school, right? So we have a responsibility, we have a duty to do right by our kids and by our parents and our community, and I'm honored for each of you for not only being here today, but being invested in our young people, and I look forward to being worthy of the sacrifices that were made for me to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray Thomas. Any other comments? Any other board members wish to make a comment at this time? If not, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the election of the Office of President of the Board of Education. I call for a nomination for the position. Yes.
I would like to place the name of Josephine C. Garcia for president for 2019-20.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia. Any other?
I second that motion.
Any other nominations for the position of president? We have a motion and a second for Ms. Garcia. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson? We need a yes or a no?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill? Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
We have an election of President Josephine Garcia.
Counsel List?
And I will turn over the gavel to Ms. Garcia.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening to my Newark community family which is here representing tonight. It's a good feeling to be sitting in my alma mater here. I attended Elliott Street School as a young lady. I have actually, Ms. Kay, which you all know her, when I attended Elliott Street School, she was Ms. LaFara. She was one of the sweetest teachers. I'm getting all emotional, but thank you, Ms. Kay, for everything you've done. Good evening to all. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Newark Board of Education for your unyielding support and tremendous vote of confidence. Thank you, board members. I will continue to work tirelessly with you all on behalf of our Newark children. I commit to you that with the community's overwhelming show of support for our three newly elected board members and the return of Board Member Taeve Padilla, and the start of our incredible two new board members, Siobhan Anderson, welcome, and Board Member Adorian Murray Thomas, welcome. We're going to accomplish all of our goals. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of our previous board presidents and board members. We have a previous board president who's here, which is Board President Sam Gonzalez. Look at him, he's like, why you say my name? We are here today because all of their efforts and commitments towards improving the school district, and I thank them. This is an incredible time to be on the board, to work so closely with the phenomenal superintendent who is preparing the school district for many, many more greater days ahead. Thank you Superintendent Leon. To Superintendent Leon and the entire central office staff, we, the board, will continue to work with the superintendent and the staff to ensure that we continue to move Newark public schools forward. While I know the road ahead is long, our progress will return this district to full local control. I am honored and proud of our parents, students, and all in the community, all of our partners, and all of our stakeholders. To be able to be in this role with this board at this time, I am truly blessed. To the mayor, to the Chief of Staff and Mary Baraka, to the Northwood Councilman, Anibal Ramos, to Senator Teresa Ruiz, our senator, our Chair of Education, thank you for always being a fearless leader and an advocate for all of our students at the state level. To Sammy, who is truly, has been my mentor this whole time, thank you, Sammy. I love you like a true brother. I want to thank all of you for your continued leadership, mentorship, and continued support. Your guidance is greatly appreciated, and I thank you. To a special note, to the Council President Mildred Crump, who called me earlier, she had a little emergency, but I just want to tell her thank you very much for serving as an incredible role model for me, simply a great human being, a teacher, a mentor, aspiration, mother, and I am proud to call you my friend, Council President. To my councilman, Councilman Carlos Gonzalez, with the fancy hat in the back over there. Unwavering assistance and support, I am gratefully, gratefully, eternally gratefully thank you. Thank you for all the opportunities you have given me, Councilman Mahefe, that's what I call him every morning. Finally, to my three boys, Donovan, Brandon, and Michael, and to my brother Manny who's here, Manny, if you can stand. I am so proud and grateful for the four of you for always being so understanding and supportive. It's not easy when you give up your whole time to sit on a position that's a true thankless position. You know, we don't get paid for being up here. We do the best we can for all Newark students. You know, we have sixty-six thousand, if I'm correct in saying that? Fifty-five thousand now, but, you know, it's a great experience to be serving on the board. So the support with the long evenings and to devote this important work, you give me the air that I need. It is because of you that I know the significance of this role. You inspire me because I know how hard it is to raise three beautiful boys. I am far from easy. Your success has been further inspired by great teachers and leaders, many who are in this room. You have had, and I thank God every day that you are mine and that I have been blessed to call, to be called your mom. I'm proud of all my three boys and I love you and thank you to all the Newark community family who's here in this room and to my principal, Mr. Luis Lopez, who's there. He was my principal at Luis Muñoz Marine when I left Elliott Street School and to my North Word family who's here. Thank you very much and I love you all.
Board Chair?
A motion for the vice-
Board Chair.
I'm sorry, Board Member Gomez?
So I'd like to just take this opportunity to welcome our new board members. I'm sure that you guys will be adding on so much of your experience and your passion in the next couple of years. I also just want to quickly congratulate our Board Chair, Josephine Garcia, because not only on being voted tonight for Chair for our board, but also because she is now the Vice President, well, not officially, but she will be on May 9th, for the Essex County School Boards Association. And we haven't been represented there in a while, if ever. I'm not sure what the history of that is, but I know that just attending the School Board Association meetings and being part of the NJSBA, that it is great to see that we are going to have representation at that level. So congratulations.
Thank you, Board Member Gomez. Board Member Padilla?
A nomination for Vice Chair. I'd like to nominate Dawn Haynes.
Second?
Second. Are there any other nominations? Roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
We have elected a Vice President. Next, we'll call for a motion on the action items which are identified as 10.1 through 10.6. We can have a motion either for each of them separately or all together, at board members.
Madam Chair?
Okay.
Board Member Bledsoe?
Just really quickly, just a discussion. I see item 10.6, travel and authorization. How much is that allotment for traveling for the-
Board Member Bledsoe, we're not there yet. We're going to allow Vice Chair Haynes to say some words.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Newark. How's everyone feeling tonight? Good. I'm glad that everybody's in good spirit and good energy because we have a lot of work to do. Over the past year, I've been the Vice President of Newark Board of Education and I've served it with pride. I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue the work that we're doing here in the great city of Newark. And I want everybody that's in this room that hears my voice to understand that we have all that we need with each other. I'm so past us beating each other up. I appreciate Kim for the work that she did. I appreciate Leah for the work that she do. Ms. Nellm for the guidance that she give us and we have work to do. And I'll continue to work for this great city and I'll continue to work for this Board of Education and all 55,000 of these students, even the ones in the charter schools who still need the love and affection that we have off as a community because they're still our children. Thank you.
Superintendent Leon?
Good evening and congratulations, Madam President, Madam Vice President, for both of your hard work and leadership throughout, you know, this going into Ms. Garcia's third year and then you obviously starting in your second. You know, your leadership and the leadership of the members who have been on the board, as well as those two board members that we recognized at the start. And it's a very important time to sit here and I just wanted to acknowledge both of you and the accolades that Ms. Haynes received during the course of this weekend and obviously the accolades that President Garcia is going to be receiving in a couple of days with regards to her leadership on the county level. So big congratulations to both of you. I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the three newly-elected board members, to the Honorable Siobhan Anderson, to the Honorable Adorian Murray-Thomas, and to the Honorable Tave Padilla. You know, it's extremely important for everyone to really understand that while we are celebrating that there is a lot of work that we have to do. There's a major reorganization of this school district that is underway. There's a lot of important clarifications that need to occur. Some of the things that we're doing today is something that occurs in every board when it reorganizes. And part of what we want to try and do is explain some of the things that we are doing to members of this community. But to the role that, you know, Ms. Anderson plays to this board, not only, you know, obviously being a mom, but having her children in the school system and understanding with her husband and her family the importance of an education from the viewpoint of a parent is extremely important. We cannot allow it to go unnoticed that this young new member of the board in Ms. Murray-Thomas brings with her, you know, a real clear focus and perspective on, you know, our children. And not only, you know, is she coming to this position with a lot of experience beyond her years, her commitment to children and young ladies in particular is just something that will help focus us all, all the time. To Mr. Padilla in his role, you know, serving the community and making sure that the work that we are doing and are obviously focused on keeping and making sure that we're accomplishing intended goals. I think the three of you, I just wanted to congratulate the three of you, welcome you to the Newark Board of Education. You are now the sixth group of actually locally-elected board members here in the city of Newark. And this next election in April will in fact result in nine members of the board being elected by the members of the Newark community in a locally-controlled setting. And I applaud the three of you and I wish this board great success and the work to come. Thank you.
At this moment, I would also like to recognize former Board President Marquise Lewis. If you can stand, he's in the back. Thank you, Marquise, for all your support always. And also Board President Rashawn Hassan. Ms. Baskerville, also, I'm so sorry.
Okay, next we'll call for a motion on each of the items designated as 10.1, 10 points through 10.6. We'll take 10.1 first, the appointment of Board Secretary. Do we have a motion? I'll read the whole thing. The appointment is, whereas NJSA 18A17-5 provides that a Board Secretary shall be appointed by the Board of Education by a recorded roll call majority vote of its full membership for a term to expire not later than June 30 of the calendar year, next succeeding that in which the board shall have been organized. Now therefore be it resolved that Brenda C. List shall be and hereby is appointed to serve as the Board Secretary effective immediately and through June 30, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Board Chair?
Board Member Gomez?
I'd like to table some of these items. I actually like to table all of these items, if possible, for the next meeting.
No, we-
Because statute says that we have to appoint a secretary within 30 days of the reorganization. So that would put us past a thirty.
So never mind, but the other items, we have to have discussion because-
We're only on 10.1 right now. Are we going to take a roll call vote for item 10.1, board members, a motion?
Yes, motion.
Who said the motion? Vice President Haynes? Board Member Norton, second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote? Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe, Mr. Bledsoe, sorry. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next. 10.2 is appointment of the Treasurer of School Monies for the 2019-20 school year. Whereas NJSA 18A17-31 provides that the Board of Ed shall, may appoint any suitable person except a member or employee of the board with a term of office fixed by the Board as the Treasurer of School Monies. Now therefore be it resolved that Evan S. Gillingham shall be and hereby is appointed to serve as the Treasurer of School Monies effective immediately and through the next reorganization of the Board. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Bledsoe, second? Ms. Mr. Padilla? Any discussion? Any questions? We'll do a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez? Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
While she's looking at the next agenda item, I would just like to acknowledge former Central Word Councilman, Darren Sharif, who's here, and also a previous Vice Chair, Patrick Council, who's in the back. And Reverend Andre Spade, I can't forget you.
Next, we have a motion for authorization to sign checks by accounts for 2019-20. Whereas the Board of Education Policy 3293.1 provides that the Board of Education shall name those persons who are authorized to sign checks on its accounts at the annual organization meeting and as becomes necessary during the year. Now therefore be it resolved that the following individuals shall be and hereby are authorized to sign checks on the specified accounts. On the maintenance account, Valerie Wilson, SBA, and Evan S. Gillingham, Treasurer of School Monies. Payroll account, Valerie Wilson, SBA, and Evan S. Gillingham, Treasurer of School Monies. Payroll deduction account, Valerie Wilson, SBA, and Evan S. Gillingham, Treasurer of School Monies. Food service account, Valerie Wilson, SBA, and Evan S. Gillingham, Treasurer of School Monies. Capital project account, Valerie Wilson, SBA, and Evan S. Gillingham, Treasurer of School Monies. And on the student activity accounts, each school principal, the school treasurer, the executive controller, and the school business administrator. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Norton, second?
Second.
Mr. Bledsoe, any discussion? Any questions? We'll do a roll call. And I will call Ms. Garcia last. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have a motion for adoption of the 2019-20 Board Meeting Calendar.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Bledsoe?
I think earlier we were, we were going to ask that this item be sent back to the Governance Committee for consideration from board members for locations, meeting locations.
Well, there's no motion yet.
Can we defer it to the Governance Committee? Because we have seven days.
You have seven days from the reorganization meeting to advertise the annual notice of board meetings.
I'll make a motion to pull it from the agenda.
I think the board should be aware, first of all, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and the community. I apologize for being rude. The board should realize that it's seven days to advertise. Advertisement requires some time period. So with regards to that, I want the board to consider that before they make the decision to defer to the next meeting.
Madam Chair?
Superintendent Leon, I mean, actually, yeah, Board Member Norton.
Yes, and so also since governance is typically compiled of chairpeople of committees, governance probably won't meet until after all the committees have been formed. And so I would suggest that we vote on the, on the Board Meeting Calendar this evening.
Board Chair?
Board Member Gomez?
So I have just a couple of issues with this, just because I think there should be changes to this calendar. I think we discussed having changes to this calendar. I don't see the changes on here. And I want to have a discussion with my fellow board members.
Okay, I say that we just send our recommendations to Board Relations with the locations that we're looking to change. If it's a location we have already visited this year, which I think we identified too, we'll recommend some other locations and then hopefully we can get a response by the close of Business Day on Friday, please, because we only have seven days from today. Do you guys agree? Board Member Hill?
Board Relations had made some changes to the calendar earlier today, so I don't think everyone is aware of that.
It's not in our fold, is it on our folder, Nancy?
She did it tonight. Tonight she did it.
Okay, so Oliver Street has been changed to Lafayette Street School and Rafael Hernandez now has the correct address.
And I think the other suggestion that Board Member Gomez was referring to is West Side. We had a meeting, we had a meeting at West Side last year, so she thought maybe we could switch to Barringer just so we won't have to wait until Friday to make a decision on it. So I figured we should just clear it up tonight. So I think that was the only other suggestion, right?
Can we just do a motion to amend the location, guys, and then we can just get this item passed?
Where would be the other location to replace West Side?
Barringer High School?
It wouldn't work because it wouldn't represent the whole city, so-
Isn't that what you recommended?
Yes, but on second thought.
So, Madam Chair?
Board Member Bledsoe?
We, we can adopt this, but we just would have to advertise it where there's a change. So we can adopt this moving forward, just amend it according to law, do advertisement, we can change the location. So I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not going to read the whole thing. It is posted. It's fairly lengthy. I'm just going to make clear that the changes that have been discussed and that will be included in this motion as it's adopted is that rather than Oliver Street School, the meeting that's been designated for there will be Lafayette Street School instead. The spelling of Rafael Hernandez School will be corrected. I'm sorry, the address. The address will be corrected. And we're not changing to Barringer at this time? Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez? Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have a motion for the designation of official newspapers for the 2019-20 school year. Again, I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but the therefore part of it is be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby designates the Star Ledger, El Nuevo Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luso Americano newspapers as the official newspapers to receive notices of meetings. In the resolution, El Nuevo Coqui is spelled wrong, but I believe it's been corrected. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Padilla? Any discussion? We'll do a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the resolution for travel authorization for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Again, I'm not gonna read the entire thing. But the the therefore clauses are now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby establishes as a minimum travel expenditure amount for the two thousand nineteen twenty budget year the sum of six hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars, which the school district shall not exceed in that budget year. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes as a maximum travel expenditure amount per employee for regular business travel for which school board approval is not required, the sum of one thousand five hundred dollars per employee. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Norton, second? Ms. Hill?
Madam Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe?
Just discussion, normally um this is a new process for us. Normally uh the travel and budget would have been approved with the actual uh operation, operating budget, I guess.
It was.
There was, there's some additional language in this resolution that's required by the statute. But the the numbers are the same, the authorization is the same.
The the dollar amounts, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Any further questions? Roll call vote? Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a request for acknowledgement and discussion of the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. There's a requirement in the School Ethics Act that annually the Board of Education acknowledge and discuss the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Uh if there are any questions or any desire on the part of any Board Member to discuss the Code of Ethics, we can do so this evening, we're also planning to do it at a later time in this school year. So we don't have to have an extended discussion. I just wanted to point out for Board Members that the Code of Ethics for School Board Members is one portion of the School Ethics Act. There's the prohibited act section that requires every Board Member to act on the basis of the welfare of all the children of the district and not to engage in any action which would be a conflict of interest, not to accept any item of value if the understanding is that that is in exchange for some action to be taken on behalf by that Board Member as a member of the Board of Education. But then there's the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, which includes ten items, all of which are in the packets of the Board Members this evening, and are more of the rules for the delineation of responsibility of the individual Board Members and the Board as a whole in the operation and management and oversight of the school district. So if there are any questions or any discussion we can, or any comments by Board Members, we can have them now. Otherwise, we can just uh wait until we have a longer discussion at a later time. Any discussion?
So if we wait, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton?
So if we wait for the discussion, do we have, is this a voting item?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, next on the committees?
No, no committees, that's something that's enclosed, yeah.
Yeah, Board Members are asked to review the uh committee interest survey and inform the Board Chair of their interest in what committees they would like to serve on.
Is is the sheet in our package?
Yes.
Next, we have the time for public participation. Public participation at Board Meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public to address the Board on issues of public concern and not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with the Board Members or district officials. The Board Chair, Superintendent, or designated may respond to questions either at the end of the session or at a later time. It shall be the responsibility of the Board Chair to maintain order and efficient process during public participation at Board Meetings, especially so that the full-time allotment for public comment is given over to speakers from the public. All speakers, regardless of whether he or she represents an organization, will be allotted no more than three minutes for comment unless an exception applies, and the public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to nine, to, I'm sorry, thirty minutes. Time limits for all speakers will be adhered to, there will be no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present, all speakers will be required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to thirty minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that will not be permitted include but are not limited to naming district employees or engaging in personal attacks, racial slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meeting or inciting others to do so. The Superintendent or Board Chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any individual's speaking privilege if the speaker's comments are disruptive or obscene. Any individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming and that the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the Board Chair or district officials, repetitive and truculent speech, or other disregard for the rules of decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual or group to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the more Board Meeting will be adjourned.
So we're gonna move on to the first speaker, and that's gonna be Patience Lewis.
Hello.
Is your mic on?
Hello?
Yes, it is.
Hello, my name is Patience Lewis, and I attend American History High School. Throughout my whole elementary, middle school, and high school career, all I've been learning about is things from like a Eurocentric point of view or perspective. I've always, um, for example, the main topic we focus is really like the hall calls. We never really learn about our background or our history. Um, all our textbooks come from like a white, white resources. My question is, since Newark Public Schools students are all predominantly black and Latino, why don't we learn from an Afrocentric and Latino um perspective? As students, we should have the right to determine our destiny. But how can we determine our destiny if we don't understand where we come from?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next speaker, Poppy Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Poppy Roberts, and I attend American History High School as well. I came here to, I came here tonight to speak on behalf of my education and the Newark Public Schools curriculum. It is a concern to me on why we don't learn about our true history and our background. It should not be an elective course for us to learn about where we come from. The same way math, English, and science is a mandatory, is a mandatory course, it should be the same way about learning our real background and where we come from. So my kid, my question is, when is the, when is the Newark Public Schools going to implement the uh the omniscient law into our schools? I also, I also know that you guys are aware about the racism that has been going and gone throughout our Newark Public Schools lately. I have a racist in my school as well. His name is Jeff Chavazquez. What are we gonna do about the racism and these racists in our school so our students and my peers can feel safe and comfortable in a public space?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Next speaker, Tamisha Humbert Plant. Not present, next speaker, Kim Barnes.
Good evening, Kim Barnes, one forty-seven Riverside Court. Uh I was before this uh Board back in November about bullying. I'm bringing up that issue because we now have a new, new Board. So my challenge to this Board is that New Jersey was the one that implemented the law about bullying. We have bullying going all across the nation, and it leads to suicide. My thing is that when you call down to the Board of Education, you can't, you can't reach the Superintendent. That you, I have called numerous and numerous of times to have it. Tonight, I would like to see you after this meeting, but my thing is this, what I'm challenging this new Board is to put in place a bullying act where you have kids that are being bullied by adults by using kids. We need to, and especially these kids, okay? These adults, and I think that y'all need to come up out to my offices and do a surprise visit and not let them know when you coming, 'cause if they know you coming, they gonna put, put, put the kids in the right way to act, because I went and I did an observation, but guess what? The kids knew I was coming. I don't need for them to know that we coming, we need to surprise. Y'all need to get your staff together, because if they don't wanna teach kids, they in the wrong business, the wrong business. I don't have no kids in the Newark school system, because my kids are grown. But I do have grandchildren, and I want them to be the next generation. But we have to put away all that bullying, 'cause bullying leads to suicide, and suicide leads to death. And it has been happening all across the country. And y'all always say that y'all want Newark to be first, let's put Newark first and get a bullying act in these schools and put Newark on the map. Thank you.
Next speaker, Thomas Ibyang.
Hey, good, good evening, community, my name is Thomas Ibyang. Yo, as we attend this meeting, the Trump Administration and his white supremacy administration is right now trying to have a coup in Venezuela. What does that have to do with Newark? A few years ago, I was watching Ferguson burn, and everybody in the media was like, yo, look at all these people in position of power, they're all white, we need to vote and get these people out. And I kept looking at the TV like, if you change those people and you put people that look like us in there, they're gonna do the same thing, they don't care. The neoliberal agenda which they carry, the ethos, that rationality which they have, stops them from working for people like me, the people in the community. They work for their corporate backers and people that fund their bank accounts. That's what I was saying to myself, I'm yelling at the TV. Then I look at my Board, it's all black and Latino people up there. You have racists in the school, racism everywhere. A athletic director sent me a message to my phone, and he said if I didn't allow my children to play for him, he wouldn't let me in the school. Our school, the school that we pay for, the taxes that we paid to have to keep these schools running. He said he wasn't gonna let me in there. I wrote the um Superintendent, and I sent the texts to him, I sent it to Santos, I don't know if he's still here, he back there. I sent it to Santos, I sent it to Veltre, I sent it to everybody. Nothing was done, no investig, this was in November, no investigation, nothing was had. Then all of a sudden now, they're trying to say it's personal reasons. Hey, look, let me read that poem again that Leah just read a couple of minutes ago. Be nobody's darling, be an outcast, I'm proud to be an outcast. Take the co, take the contradictions of your life and wrap them around you like a shawl to parry stones and keep warm. I don't care, you can say what you wanna say about me, but you don't pay me, nobody own me. I work for the community, for our children. While I had these kids with a three-point-five GPA a few months ago, the entire basketball team, the athletic director was allowed to remove me from the school, even though I didn't get paid, I worked for free. I volunteered, let me see how much, I got a minute left, I worked for free. Everybody sat there and did nothing. As we speak now, no investigation has been had about this man, the same person that the kids are talking about. Why is that so? Because there's a blue wall of silence, was that one ten? That thing ain't moving, oh thirty-five seconds, y'all just did me dirty. No, nothing has been done about this, hey, look, this is not personal. Yo, till you people leave, till I die, I will continue to come here and speak on these matters until they switch the way our society functions, our, our schools functions, 'cause they belong to us. You ain't gotta tell me to shut up, I'm leaving.
Next speaker, Diane Galloso.
Oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Patience Roberts.
Sorry, Patience Roberts.
That's okay. Um I'm here about to talk about the same gentleman, Mr. Jeff Chavazquez. Earlier, a lady came up here and talked about bullying. We do have people that work at Newark Public Schools who also bully parents and students alike. This guy, Mr. Jeff Chavazquez, has been working for NPS I don't know how long. And he continues to do things, and nobody does anything about it. He called colleges, so he claimed about my son, one of them was mom of college, and said that my son wasn't a right fit. But we happened to meet up with the coach from mom at college, who said he had no call from the athletic director. I don't even know if he's another, eh, I don't even know if he's an athletic director, 'cause they changed his title, he's not a faculty rep, he's a gym teacher, he's this and that. He also stopped my daughter from playing basketball this school year. He throws food on the floor for kids to fight over. I can go one, but kinda nervous right now. But something needs to be done about him and all the racists that work at NPS, he's not the only one. And like I said before, there's a reason why he's allowed to be. It has to be an environment for these people to exist. We need, we need to do something about it, and we need to do something about it right now. Our kids should not have to suffer because somebody gets to keep their job. This is not about people getting paid, this is about our kids. I will be up here again next month, and a month after that, and a month after that.
Next speaker, Diane Galloso. Not appearing, next speaker, Clifford Anderson Spencer.
Yes, good evening, Superintendent Leon, Madam Chair, and Board Members. My name is Cliff Anderson, I'm the Community Engagement Specialist at Spencer Miller Community School, and I'm here to speak about the added value of the Community Engagement Specialist's position and the validity of moving forward with uh the vision of you, uh Mr. Leon, and the Board Members. By definition, the Community Engagement Specialist is primarily responsible for the communication and the outreach to parents, families, and community stakeholders with information and resources. In addition, we support the Office of Family and Community Engagement, and we work closely with various internal stakeholders throughout the district. The support your CES's provide, Mr. Leon, is so comprehensive that is second to none. On two occasions, as the Community Engagement Specialist, tragedy occurred at the Spencer Miller School that resulted in the sudden loss of life of two of our student scholars. The Community Engagement Specialist with the Principal served as ambassadors for the district to support the families and listen to concerns and needs that the family may have had. In supporting those needs under the direction of Senior Manager Noel Brooks-Joyce, we were able to walk through, work through complex issues, namely the Immigration Department, which was really an intimidating process for, for our parents. What brought about a positive resolution? On another occasion, it involved the family who wanted to have their birth certificate amended. It was the Community Engagement Specialist with the support of FACE, acting as a problem solver, developing an understanding of the issue, and listening to the concerns and needs of the parents. Mr. Leon, when you rolled out your NPS priority twenty twenty at Central High School, it was your Community Engagement Specialist serving as facilitators, collecting data through the SWOT analysis process worksheets given to us. I would like to spend the, the remaining of my time to let you know the significant role the CES, Community Engagement Specialist, spent sharing with you, the Board. the CES, Community Engagement Specialist, spend sharing with you, the board, in lead positions and in supportive role positions with our parents and our family, especially at Spencer Miller School. Every parent, family, guest that enters the building is directed to the CES where their needs are determined. The CES, the Community Engagement Specialist, supports all student enrollment and registration. The CES is involved with establishing teacher and parent meetings by finding out teacher prep time, also parent and administration meetings.
Next speaker, Leah Owens.
Good evening. Leah Owens, 765 Broad Street. So first, I'd like to send greetings from Denise Cole. She won't be here this evening. She asked me to say that she is committed to children over politics. She couldn't be here due to an emergency surgery she has to go through, but she said she'll be back soon, stronger than ever. Congratulations to Madam Chair and Vice Chairs for your reappointment to your positions and to Chair Garcia for your appointment to the position on the SS County Association. It's definitely long overdue. I agree, being the county seat, Newark needs to be represented in the County School Board Association. And also, this is an almost thankless job, so I would like to say thank you to Vice Chair Haynes for recognizing my work on the board. So as a reminder or possibly for your information, educating black and brown children rightly requires a political commitment. It has to be about more than just academics. So I wholeheartedly support Clarity 2020. Superintendent Leon is aware of that. I appreciate the time that he spent talking with me about it before it was unrolled and then when commocation occurred and then more conversations till I could really let it sink in, because there's a lot going on. But I certainly support it wholeheartedly. But again, it can't just be about academics and services. We have to understand the role that institutional racism plays and the fact that a lot of our students in the Newark Board of Education School District are not doing well. We can't forget about that. In the testimony earlier, and I'm sure even afterwards, we'll just reiterate that point. So removing racism starts with changing the culture of our school district, and that means we need the right people in place. So it doesn't necessarily mean that people have to go, but they may need training. They need to take the cries of families and students seriously. It can't be something that we just hear every month. These families shouldn't have to come up here every month and talk about the same situation. It definitely is a concern of mine, being a board member, asking for an investigation to Science Park, and in the month and a half left of my tenure, I received no sort of report, and that's unacceptable, quite frankly. It's also, so in knowing that it's important that the Board of Education use other position, you all use your position to push for change and to be a voice and to take positions. So for example, there's two particular situations that are outside of the school district but still important that the board is taking a position. Right before I left my home this afternoon, I had the pamphlet from the city about the lead pipes in my mailbox and I, the lead situation, and I appreciate the information, but we have to realize there are still so many of our students that are living in homes where these pipes aren't going to be changed anytime soon because there's only a certain amount that the city is required to change and underscore required. Just because it's only required doesn't mean those would be the only ones that are changed, and there are families that cannot afford to spend $1,000 or more to have those pipes changed. So the board needs to be an advocate to make sure that these children have clean drink, safe and water, drinking water. And last, I'll just say, we also need to say no to a youth prison. We cannot literally have a pipeline on South Orange Avenue. We cannot. We cannot. And there's obviously other elected officials that need to take a stance as well, but we're under local control. We have the power. We need to take a position and a stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Owens. Next speaker, Julissa Vasquez. Julissa Vasquez, not appearing. Next speaker, Lynette Wilcox.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Lynette Wilcox and I am at the 75th and 95th Clayton Avenue. This is about the Community Engagement Specialists and their values. The information that the parents receive from the Community Engagement Specialists at our school, the workshops that they set up for us. In other words, what I'm saying is this, we need the Community Engagement Specialists in our school because that's where we get all our information from. Nowhere else in this school, we have to go there. We have this parent conflict. The Community Engagement Specialists are the ones that solve the problems. We don't get any of that from administration. All the parents that come inside the building, that's where we're standing, to the parent room. Any resources, whatever the resources may be, that's where we get them from. So what I'm saying, we need our Community Engagement Specialists. And we can do something about all the conflict and the chaos in the schools. Thank you.
Next speaker, Margaret Walker. Not appearing. Next speaker, Lucius Jones. Not appearing. Next speaker, Yolanda Johnson. Not appearing. Next speaker, Mahalia Sheffield. Next speaker, Cesareese Augustus. Next speaker, Denise Cole. Next speaker, Wilamina Holder.
Good evening, Wilamina Holder, 765 Broad Street. I just want to say, working on behalf of children and families is never a thankless task, never a thankless job. We may not see the reward immediately, we may not see it in our lifetime, but when you work and you're committed on behalf of children and on behalf of their families to empower them, we can never use the word thankless. The other thing I just want to be respectful, I'm not sure how to address this charter school board, so is it the same way I've addressed the board and previously? I'm hoping it is because we have some real issues we have to work through. Number one, I don't know who's going to be the program and curriculum chair, but we have an issue I'd like to address to the superintendent and the board, and that is Newark enrolls and also the disaggregation of data from the charter schools. At Westside, we've been dumped with children from Mary P. Thomas and Met's Charter. In the last three, six months, nine months, before a park, now it's the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, we want that aggregation, we want disaggregation of that data. If they're the Westside students, we want them on our graduation count. If they're not, we want them to know they came from somewhere else and we did not have them for the two, three, and four years so we can educate them in a proper format. So I would like to see a Newark report. I know the state has to be changed at the legal level, so Secondary Parent Council has committed to meeting with the superintendent, with the Commission of Education and the State Board to change that conversation. We hope that you would join us as board members to have a Newark report. And what that would look like is every school that gets children at the last minute or within a year or two that is undercredited, that's not on target to graduate, that that school that sent them, that's put on their report and not the receiving school because it's unfair. It doesn't speak to equity, it doesn't speak to justice for either of the students in either of the cases because when we get these children, we don't get the money to be able to support them in the way that they deserve. So that's one thing. We'd like to see a Newark report separate and apart when we report our graduation count and our enrollment count. And speaking of enrollment, Newark enrolls must be investigated. I got calls coming, I went to a conference today and I'll be back tomorrow, from parents in the middle of the conference saying, Holder, there's no school for my child. What do you mean? Letters are sent saying there's no high school available, Anne Street and First Street, there's no waiting list. The only waiting list that showed up on Newark enrolls was the charter schools, which I find very hard to believe unless we're doing such a great job, and we may be, with people voting to go to the traditional schools, but there still should be room in the end. So there should be an investigation around Newark enrolls to see what in the world is going on at that place, at West Kenny Street. And also, the board agenda is still not bilingual now. I'm thinking we have a growing population of people who do not have English as their native language. When are we going to get our act together? We should have Creole, we should have Spanish and English. Other districts are doing it because I've seen the work. We, are we too lazy to do it? Do we not have the personnel to do it? Are we not committed to do it? Is the political will there? Are we doing politics over children? What is happening? Because we need to make sure that, we want to engage the entire community, which is why the election results end up the way they did with less than 1% of the people coming out to vote. So we need an education going on, but we need all the communities involved.
Next speaker, Marquis Lewis.
Marquis Aquil Lewis, 33 Vaughan Drive, Norton, New Jersey. This is the day that the Lord have made. On April 16th, someone put out a post and saying that our children lost, but I came to declare that that is wrong. On April 16th, our children won. The division of this board was gone, and I believe that on April 16th, I jumped up and I cried and I celebrated all night because my son, who had to sit in this audience two years ago, when I was elected chair, he and my family, they cried. But on April 16th this year, I believe that my family got justice when I allowed, when I made sure that Shavon Anderson was elected, when I made sure that Dorian Thomas was elected, and when I made sure that Teyvor D, my buddy, was reelected. Justice for my family happened on April 16th, and I came to commend those board members who stood behind this team because they said our children lost out, but our children won. I'm glad to see that I feel comfortable now as I left that board. I feel like my nine years is not in vain. I feel that we are now a family that can talk together, that can pray together, that can curse each other out when the doors are shut, but come out on this stage in unity. And that's what we was missing. We was missing unity. And what I love about unity is unity is one of the things that Jesus talked about the most in the Bible, us coming together, together making sure that we put our petty differences aside, that we put ourselves aside, and we focus on the children of this city. And I think now that we are in the right direction. I'm happy and I'm astute. I got a smile on my face, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I got a smile on my face because now you can be the chair that you are. You can be the chair and not have to worry about looking over your shoulders, people going down to the state talking about you, but you can now govern with dignity and honor. God bless you all.
Next speaker, Natia Preston.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent, Mr. Roger. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist--
You can state your name and address for the record, thank you.
I'm sorry, Natia Preston, 433 Peshawna Avenue. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist at Peshawna Avenue School, and like the other Community Engagement Specialists came up and said, the CESs are the heart of the school. However, it is hard for you to do your job when you don't have the support of your school leader. The school leader at Peshawna Avenue have sent so many employees out on FMLA. The staff are leaving because they're literally sick. I have missed so many days this year because I was sick going to work. I reached out to the assistant superintendent. I got no response. That is unacceptable, unacceptable. And it's deplorable when a principal has to call the police on a parent because she want to come into school to see her child perform on stage because she want to come to the PTO meeting. We sitting in a PTO meeting with police officers. And I want to apologize to Board Member Hill because she was there sitting in that meeting. She had to witness that. She was invited to the PTO meeting and had to witness that. It's not fair to me. It's not fair to the other staff that work there that scared to speak up. I was a little nervous about coming here talking, but I have a voice. I'm born and raised in the city of Newark and I'm not scared at all. I came here to let you know what was going on in the school that I work at. There's a lot more I can say, but I'm pretty sure, Mr. Leon, maybe you will have a meeting and I can tell you a lot more. Thank you.
Next speaker, Anfaal Muhammad Jenkins. Next speaker, Christopher Kanek.
Christopher Kanek, 155 Berkeley Avenue in Bloomfield, New Jersey. I'm happy to address the Newark Board of Education, no longer titled Newark Public Schools. I don't know why we're not public schools anymore. I guess that's part of the inclusion of the charter schools, which we have no control over the money for and limited to no control over the enrollment in. So I'm not sure whether or not they're our students. They certainly are our children as children in Newark. And as children in Newark, they've been poisoned, and you are all aware of that. I know that Newark Public Schools, my bad, once again Newark Board of Education, has taken active steps to filter water in the district. Lead water in the district is going to be an immeasurable problem. I'm not sure why it is that Mildred Crump is the very first person to come out against the ICE Detainment Center, but you know, lead, detainment of human beings, the imprisonment of children right down the street from our schools is politics as usual in Newark, New Jersey. It's why a good portion of this board is made up of very active charter advocates, and it's why it's going to be hard to trust some people to make the right decision when it really counts. Lead has been rising, special needs inadequacy has been rising, prison counts, people in prisons rising. I wonder if there's anything between those. As our esteemed president might say, there's certainly no collusion, no relation. I wonder where he was educated. Now we hear talk of racism in schools. People don't like to talk about that, not employees. I, of course, sit on the executive board of the Newark Teachers Union, and that's a real hard issue for us to deal with. The process requires censuring individuals, requires us to boot them out of the union, and yet the federal government ruled under the Janus case that we still have to support them if push comes to shove. So our hands are tied. I hope yours are not. I'd like to see an end to segregation in this district. As long as the charter schools continue to enroll special needs at a lower rate, and by lower, I mean dramatically lower, and as long as they continue to marginalize those under free and reduced price lunch-- under free and reduced price lunch, we will continue to have segregation, racism, and inequity in this district. Thank you.
Next speaker, Brenda Toilo. Not appearing, next speaker, Lyndon Brown. Not present, next speaker, Dana N. Murray.
My message is biased, is for my daughter, Adorian. Adorian, you were selected and chosen for such a time as this, and it's my expectation, as it is the community of Newark, that you're going to always work in the best interest of Newark Public School students. Don't be distracted by the sideline conversations and people who have things to say because you have made it where you are, because you earned it. You will be great on this board, and I wish you continued success.
That concludes our speakers list.
Next, we need a motion for the items that are listed as 14.0, that is 14.1 through 14.15. We can have a motion to adopt them all as a block, or separately if anyone prefers.
We'll go to the block, the board chair?
Is that a motion?
No, I, I think there are board members who had questions. There's some down here to my right.
Board Chair.
Board Member Gomez.
So I'd like to take 4.10 out and 4.12, 4.13.
Wait, 10, 10, 12, what else?
13, 14, and 15, I believe, and 4.6, 14.6, sorry.
All right, so 14, 10, 12, and...
Actually, 14.6 through 14, 14.15, sorry. Thank you.
That's all of them?
Yeah, if we could vote on them all separately, I guess.
Yes.
Wait, wait. You want to vote on them?
Yeah. It's just, we haven't had discussion on these items. Let me explain why we haven't had a discussion on these items. These are cafeteria food items, and also there's student transportation services, and I would like to have a discussion, I don't know if here at this moment, or an executive session, but we haven't had really meetings this month, at least I haven't, and I would like to have a discussion about these items before we vote on them.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton, which is also the Chair of Finance and could probably assist, oh, she still isn't, until someone gets reappointed. Board Member Norton?
Can I, instead of, can we block vote for 4.5 to 4.1, I'm sorry, 4.1 to 4.5, since those are reoccurring agenda items, instead of one by one?
Right, one through five?
Yes. Yes.
Board Chair, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Motion, we need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, and second by Mr. Bledsoe. On 14.1 through 14.5 as a block?
Yes.
Any discussion on those items?
No.
Any questions?
No.
We'll do a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do we have a separate motion for additional items, or for any block of those items?
Okay, does, does any board member have a question regarding item 14.6, which is the award of student transportation services to and from?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hill. Any discussion on 14.6?
Madam Chair.
For Bledsoe.
I believe Board Member Gomez asked to have a discussion about this item.
If we can just have a brief explanation on what this item, I know, if we could have that, thank you.
Is Ms. Quinica here? We request, I requested as Board Chair to make sure that all directors and managers were here to address the board's questions and concerns to item pertaining to our board agenda, and I truly hope that the directors and managers are here to answer the concerns of myself and colleagues.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Haynes.
Motion to defer 14.6 to 14.15 for the next meeting.
Well, we have a motion on the table to adopt. Is that a request to modify the motion, or to have it withdrawn?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton.
So for 4.6, 14.6, when are these routes, yes, these routes need to be implemented for the urgency of it?
On your agenda, it states here that it's a two-year, correct?
When do they start?
It starts in September, beginning September, and it's with a renewal for a two-year additional with a one-year period, and all the attachments were attached on ESB? For who the vendors are, there just were no transportation routes there? If that's your question, the transportation route, or just the time?
I just wanted to know the urgency, if we are tabling it for another, just for another meeting, and if these routes need to...
Well, RFP went out, right, Val? So if the RFP went out, we have...
These, these, these routes are actually routes that were solicited through an RFP. You will remember that transportation bidding for home-to-school transportation, for bidding and routing for home-to-school transportation for special needs students, approximately 4,000 students was brought in-house last year. So what that required was a solicitation of all routes, creation of brand-new routes, solicitation of those routes. This particular piece is the beginning of work for the 1920 school year. So children who are on buses that are already routed, and were routed for this year, that we anticipate will renew for next year, which is why the contract is effective September 1st.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe.
Thank you. Through your chair, can, can we hear from the business administrator or superintendent the potential negative impact that we do not adopt this tonight?
Ms. Wilson?
The negative impact is we are trying to get vendors locked down for the new school year in terms of our ability to acquire those vendors who have the capacity to provide services in a consistent, high-quality, and proficient manner. The later you wait to award contracts, we have seen the results of that with the transition that occurred for this school year, the later you wait to award contracts. These vendors are going to deal with contracts with the first districts that ask them for services. So as we wait, the pool of available vendors, or the capacity of vendors, gets made smaller by interest from other districts.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to vote on 4.6.
Val, knowing what happened a couple of months back with one of our transportation companies, and I think this is what the board is feeling at this moment, did we, I know they went out through the RFP, they fill out the necessary paperwork in the package of the RFP, but I think some of their concerns are just to make sure it's a reputable company, our kids are going to be safe, that the abstract of these drivers are current and safe to transport our students.
That's, the abstract of drivers is required when a contract is awarded. So in the case we had very recently, the individual who was driving the bus was not put forward by the company as a driver. So that abstract was never checked, she was not hired by the company as a driver. In this case, we're people, and I think everybody has gotten the message that we will not tolerate people just substituting people without the proper credentials. We canceled some 47 routes with that vendor, just done over the course of that weekend. So we took very definitive, very aggressive action to indicate our unwillingness to accept poor-quality service. So with what we're talking about now, rules are established, vendors understand what is required of them, and they also understand the consequences if they're not meeting certain pieces. General Counsel has reviewed our contracts. Contracts clearly indicate abstracts are to be provided, they're to be current, and they're to be consistent.
Board Chair.
Board Member Gomez?
So I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I believe it's about $3 million, $3.5 million?
For the contract?
For the contracts? Okay. I just have a question overall, and you might not know the answer right here and there, but how are we saving more this year than the year before when it was not in-house?
That's still a work in progress right now, because the school year hasn't ended. So I can't say to you that we're going to save, it is a combination of things that we look at. We have taken very, I don't want to keep using the word aggressive, but very significant steps towards ensuring that vendors are not gouging us for price. So sometimes it means we may have bid something and a vendor has given us a price that we think is far, far exceeding our estimate. So we've gone back and said, no, we're not going to take that price, we're going to ask for another vendor or whatever. So as, I fully anticipate and expect that I will provide a report to the board once we actually tally up and close out the year.
Thank you, and I would like to see that report, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe?
Specifically, Ms. Wilson, can you let us know how many vendors were actually discussing? I believe it was about four.
For this particular contract, I think it's four, if I remember correctly. I don't have the resolution in front of me, I think four or five.
And if I'm not mistaken, I believe these vendors are currently doing routes for this year right now.
Yes, as I said, children are currently riding these routes. So these routes have been established. We anticipate that these children will continue next year. They, there may be some changes in the routes because of our mobility rate within the district. Children move, so one route, one person's going to come off the route, you put on somebody else who fits on that route. But I think what is critical for the board to understand is, one, we're locking in price, which is going to, whether or not we're saving, and whether or not we're being cost-efficient. We're locking in reputable vendors who have serviced the district. Even the vendors have indicated to us a willingness to work with us earlier in the year than to wait until, let's say, later down in the year, where they've gotten bids and requests from other districts who compete with us.
Specifically in the ballpark of the three-point-something-million...
I'm, I'm not sure, I understood, I thought there was something more to that question.
So, so you're, you're locking them into...
It will be for that pricing.
That pricing?
Yes.
Okay.
No, RFP went out, Board Member Hill, the pricing cannot go up. It's a contract break out?
No, they won't, they wouldn't be able to change your pricing in this case, because we did do that RFP, and because it's a set price, and, you know, I'd like to award the contract sooner rather than later. I think time is, is important to us, to make our transportation as stable and consistent as we can. And there will be more of these contracts coming before we get to the end of the school year, and then you will also receive a series of contracts, which we bid this year.
Madam Chair, just really quickly, so this, this particular contract is a renewal, or we're awarding them for doing the work that they've been doing so far, like can you explain to...
Okay. When we began this process last, early, early, the end of la, not early, the end of last school year for this school year, they received a contract award for a period of time within this school year. We've now had a year's experience with them, so now we did, we've decided here, every year, we've always renewed routes, even with the commission, there's a portion of your routes that you renew, and then there's a portion that you bid again, for whatever reason, so...
So based on the trial period, like the trial and error period?
Well, last year, this year, I would consider it a trial period, I wouldn't necessarily call it that, but now we're looking to award a contract, and you know, a contract can be for a single year with several years and options for renewal. Each renewal will come before the board again, just like any other contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion?
Well, we have a motion and a second already, I believe, so we will call for a vote, roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Epstein.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray-Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board Chair.
Board Member Gomez?
I would like to defer items 4.7 through 14.15.
So that's the cafeteria food items?
14.7 through 14.15.
And the other one is, well, 14.8, I think we should take out, that's the facility leasing purchase, which is where the superintendent goes out to solicit locations for the high schools to have their graduation ceremonies?
That's fine, I have no problem. And the smart boards and accessories, that's fine, sorry.
Also, Brenda, so that's 14.8 on this list, 14.9.
So do we have a motion?
And I think 14.12, because that's coming from Blizzard, it's bottled water, and we have identified who the company is, who's the supplier, and where it's going. I think our concerns as a board was 14.7, 14.11.
14.10.
And 14.5, thank you so much.
10?
14.10.
Yes.
What I'm hearing is that we can go forward with 14.1...
7, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Which means we need a motion to adopt items 14.8, 14.9, and 14.12. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton?
Just to clarify, clarify, 14.14, fresh fruit and vegetable program purchasing, is, that's a purchase, is that a grant of any sorts?
That's for the summer program, am I correct in saying that, Val?
It's for the summer program and the next school year. We do have a fresh fruit and vegetable program under the Department of Agriculture that uses surplus fresh fruit and vegetables, but this is actually the purchase, I think. I don't have the resolution in front of me, does someone have it?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Hill?
So, um, what are the questions and concerns of, why are we tabling this?
Well, we're going to allow Valerie to explain once we have the board members ask their questions on the item they have a question on. Board Member Hill?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton?
So, I'm confused, are we tabling these?
We wanted to defer them, not table, we wanted to defer them, because I know there was questions for 14.7, 11, and not the nutrition one, and 14.12, we got the clarification, which was the Blizzard water. And I know I had questions regarding 14.7, and that was because we have vendors here who, let me see where we're at, and it was also the Vice Chair, she's here. The product code, there's no product code, there's no desired brand or vendor where this food is coming from, we don't know what we're giving these children. One of our highest complaints all year long is the nutrition, the lunch was being fed to our babies, and I think this is our opportunity to try to, I don't, we weren't even a part of this process, and I know we're not supposed to be because it's an RFP, but we want to make sure that the desired brands, the packaging, the quantity, the description of the food that's being fed to the students is something healthy, and that you would want your kids to eat. and that you would want your kids to eat, or I would like to see district staff eat for thirty straight days. Because what they're getting every day, to me, is not something I would want my child to consume. In certain schools, not in all schools, you know, it could be what the kid is selecting. It can be that maybe there's no, uh, another option for them that day, I don't know. But, I know there were several concerns here from other board members.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe?
I, I think that, again, through your chair, we should find out the negative impact this may have on students.
I agree.
And, we have to be really careful that we're not acting in an arbitrary manner.
Right.
And if it's on the agenda for recommendation, I'm not staying to rubber standard what I'm saying. We should have a discussion on potential negative impact this will have on our, our summer program.
Reggie, we should, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Because I haven't heard, I hear that there is concerns, but I haven't heard anyone give a legitimate concern why we should table this.
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Haynes?
A legitimate concern is it was given to us, we did not, uh, discuss any of these matters. And if, I find it extremely annoying that we're discussing, sitting here on the, the deos versus us having a committee conversation as we normally do. One of the huge concerns that all of us get is about the quality of the food. So, for this to be given to us and then told to vote on it on a night of a reorganization meeting is alarming. So, no, I do not want to vote on the food specifically, I've been talking about this for the last two months.
Or we could have went into executive session.
I, I think we should have done that. Um, I, I do hear your concern, Ms. Haynes. Uh, however, um, business still have to go on initially. So, I'm not talking about specifically the, the quality.
Well, that's what we're discussing, Reggie, it's an open market award for a vendor, a description, what the, the, what they're going to eat for the next year.
Madam Chair.
So, when I get all these calls and pictures and texts and students, uh, on my Facebook sending me an instant message, look what I'm eating today, and it doesn't look like this or this, or something you will consume? I'm going to refer it to you, go ahead, Board Member Norton.
For recommendations, since for fourteen point seven is the only one that really, that consists of what's being discussed. Everything else in terms of fresh fruit and vegetables, the award of milk and milk products. Um, can we move forward with the other items and table fourteen point seven?
Make a motion.
A motion to...
Which one she wants to?
What's being discussed?
Discuss, the suggestion is just, just to table fourteen point seven and move on the others. Well, I'm talking...
Eleven and seven are in our food items. Okay, so...
Like, we requested for the finance committee, when this RFP came up, to please keep us abreast, let the board know this was coming up. Maybe we can, you know, do some food sampling from these companies, ensure that there was just better quality food. Of course, we don't want to not be able to provide food to our students this coming fall or during the summer program, but, uh, maybe it's something we...
Yes, and so, I agree, and so, instead of just, um, tabling majority of four, fourteen point seven, fourteen point fifteen, can we just only table fourteen point seven and fourteen point eleven and move forward with the rest? On a vote this evening.
Why don't you make a motion for the other items and see if there's a second?
So, motion to move on four, four, uh-uh, fourteen point eight to fourteen point ten and fourteen point twelve to fourteen point fifteen.
Motion by Ms. Norton, second by Ms. Hill. And let me repeat what the motion is, it's to approve items fourteen point eight, fourteen point nine, fourteen point ten, fourteen point twelve, fourteen point thirteen, fourteen point fourteen, and fourteen point fifteen.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Nope. So, specifically, why are we holding off on open market purchases?
Because that's also a food product that's in question.
We'll have a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Abstain.
Ms. Haynes?
No.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Mary Thomas?
Abstain.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Abstain.
We have six yes notes, six yes votes, three abstentions, and one no vote, the motion carries. Items fourteen point seven, fourteen, uh, point eleven. No, I'm sorry, fourteen point seven, fourteen point thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and eleven are being tabled, is that correct? Fourteen point seven, fourteen point eleven, fourteen point, anything else? Eleven, just seven, eleven.
Yes, seven, eleven. Well, they're going to go back to the finance and operations committee.
Right. No further discussion, we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Wilson, please.
Um, I've heard the board members' conversation this evening, and I'd like to put some information on the record. The finance committee, along with the board chair, received notification once the items were placed on the agenda, uh, indicating why the items were there. And, uh, if there were any questions, those questions should be directed to me so that I would be able to answer them. Uh, that email was sent out, uh, I think Monday morning. I have not received any questions prior to tonight. The items for, you're right, we did not have a committee meeting because April is not a month in which we have a regular board process since we have our election. Tonight is the organization meeting, but there are also some things that are extremely time sensitive. Food is an item that if we look at the statute, we do not have to do an RFP. We do an RFP because of the volume of products that we buy for the district. In terms of these contracts, they need to be in place in time for summer school feeding, which begins, I think, July, uh, sev- no, July seventh, it's after the holiday. And it is also part of the annual contract, if you look at the contract, um, term for the school year. So, these contracts were time sensitive, which is why they were placed on the agenda. It is fully our intent to have some cuttings and tastings with the board. We wanted to put these items forward because we won't meet until pretty near the end of May, which is a pretty close turnaround time to get contracts in place in time to do summer feeding. It was not intended to circumvent the board or to not share with them information. So, that was all shared in my email with the finance committee. The smart boards, which you are going to vote on, I think, are all going to...
We put it on...
Yeah, I'm just putting it on the record that the smart boards were also included in my email to the finance committee and the board chair, indicating why we were doing it because we're looking for schools to be able to purchase technology and equipment using the nineteen twenties school funds prior to them leaving on vacation. So, those smart board technology items will be in place and possibly installed in time for the beginning of the school year. My facilities department needs some lead time on that, and there's lead time on the purchase. So, I just want to put that on the record.
Ms. Wilson, can we sample, can they send some samples? Can we see that this, you know, what this turkey, chicken, pepperoni, club sub, uh, looks like?
I can make arrangements for that to occur.
And that, that's one of the requests we made, you know, months ago, that we wanted to sample what was, when this RFP came out.
Okay.
You know, then you have some vendors that we don't even know who the vendor is. You know, I, I know we, not all of us shop name brand, but when you hear Kellogg's, it's someone you can, you're familiar with. If you see Sunkiss, you know it's someone you're familiar with. There's some vendors that, there's no brand.
Okay, so, so, and...
Where?
No, not from where. We had a discussion at the operations committee, which a number of members were present at, where, uh, Dr. McGill presented on the food program and explained how, uh, food items in the food program are held to a certain standard. Some of the issues, I'm going to be real direct here. Some of the issues that we are having with food that's served to children in this district are not as a result of the product. They are a result of improper storage, they're a result of improper preparation. And staff are trained. You know, you, it's a consistent, everyday, um, activity. You know, you have to keep reinforcing that product doesn't need to sit on the steam table for three hours. It's not going to look the same, it looks at eleven, like one o'clock when the children come in for lunch. If you store something and you do not store it under proper temperatures, that's where you get mold. Now, I'm not saying a vendor may not send a product that has a problem, just like you buy at home. You go to the supermarket, you buy, there's something wrong with the product, you take it back. We send those products back. So, it's consistency in terms of training, in terms of people following directions. We're a large program, we serve, you know, twenty, thirty thousand kids a day, two meals a day. So, it's work to be consistent, to make sure things happen the way they're supposed to. The quality of our products are determined by a label that is not a retail label. There are retail companies that have entered into the school market. So, you will see Kellogg's because they're one of the biggest cereal vendors in the country. But, the products that are served to our children are labeled CN, child nutrition labeling. If we go to the Department of Agriculture's website and look at this, and I know Dr. McGill shared this, we will see that that CN labeling has specific characteristics that it brings with it. It needs to meet this nutritional specifications of the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. They're standards, so that we are being consistent in our weight, in our mineral and vitamin content, in terms of sodium, in terms of sugar, in terms of the use, even the amount of breading that's on a chicken patty. It may look like a Tyson chicken patty that you get at home, but it's not. It's different. Just for the record.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton?
I most seriously share the sentiments, um, of Vice Chair Haynes and yourself. My concern is the turnaround time, if we table this and vote on it for next month, and the food being, uh, ready for the start of summer school, which starts July first. And so, I completely agree that the quality of food needs to be of high standards. But I do not agree that we should not vote on this in fear of there not being food for our students come the summer.
Val, is, I think you stated yes to my question earlier, can we get samples of this prior to, you know, because the, this, you know, one of them is for, for July first, and the other one is not until September. What is that, Board Member Hill?
No.
No, they're separate, they're on here as separate items, not a package deal.
Um, in response to your first question, we're more than happy to provide samples. If you want to, you've identified certain items where you say there's not a brand or you have a concern, if you want to identify those specific items, I'll ensure that we get samples in. Um, and we'll work out when we can provide them. Or when the board's available, really, to review them.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Norton?
Since we have a board retreat coming up, Val, can we have these samples, um, be presented to us at the board retreat?
Retreat's the eighteenth, I think we can probably meet that requirement. But we have to put time on the agenda for the testing to, the tasting to occur, for the vendor. Because when you present an item, you want to present the item in its best light. So, it's not that you prepare it and just do it, you know.
So, Ms. Val, great suggestion, instead of ordering breakfast that morning, lunch that afternoon, let's have everyone eat what our babies are eating that day. Everyone, everyone.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Bledsoe?
Um, I just, Ms., through your chair, Ms. Wilson, um, can, can you inform us, in the event, uh, if a vendor does send a product over that's subpar, uh, what is the district's practices, uh, for dealing with that specific vendor? Is there a financial impact, uh, what, what practices do you have in place?
Okay, so, if a vendor were to, the vendors receive, um, a request for proposal. In that request for proposal, we identify items that we want to get. So, if I want tomato sauce, I want the tomato sauce with certain specifications as it relates to child nutrition labeling. So, not everybody's going to be able to provide me the sauce that we need. So, if a vendor provides a product, they deliver a product, and we find the product to be subpar, each of our schools has a copy of the contract specifications with the understanding that if they don't meet those specifications, they return the product. So, tomato sauce is probably something that people aren't going to return unless it's noticeably spoiled or the cans are bulging or something like that. You know, if you have bananas that come in, we bring our bananas in not in a totally ripe state, but in a state that it'll take two or three day, two days for it probably to ripen so that it's at prime ripeness when it's to be served. Now, if people keep the item past that optimal level and don't serve it, or they handle it in a way that bruises the bananas, if you drop the bananas, they're going to bruise. If you push them against something, they're going to bruise. And then, they're not going to ripe properly, and they're going to be spotted or speckled. So, you know, there are standards. The vendor gets a purchasing complaint in terms of you've delivered product to us that is not what we expected. In many cases, the price of the product is deducted from the bill. Because food services is one of those areas that you actually have time to pay your bills. So, we deduct the cost directly on the invoice and pay through a accounts payable only what we've received, what we've accepted, and what we've used.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Wilson, I look forward to the food sampling at our retreat. Members of the public, it's an open retreat, I would like to see members of the audience there, too. Board Member Haynes? Mm-hmm, I have them all, he, I have, I have identified all the items. I was looking forward for Ms. Quinica to be president, as I requested, she's the director.
That's Dr. McGill.
I'm sorry, Dr. McGill. And I don't understand why any of the directors and managers are not present tonight when the board requested for them to be present.
Madam Chair?
Board Member, Vice Chair Haynes?
So, if it's not the food, when we get it from the vendor, and it's the preparation of the food, how do we fix the problem? Because the children, at the end of the day, are still getting unquality food, nasty food. As health conscious as we are in two thousand and nineteen, unhealthy food. So, if it is in fact not coming from the vendor, since we need to vote on this tonight, and it's the preparation of the food, perhaps we need to look at a different quality of people that actually is hired to cook the food. But I wouldn't even dare to blame it on the people that's in the cafeteria because we don't, we have an absent director here now. So, I'm expecting a little more respect to the fact that we are requesting for our directors to be here so they can address these things. No, no offense to you at all, Ms. Wilson. No, no offense to you at all, Ms. Wilson, but something gotta give.
I did not request for directors to be present because I felt that I was capable to answer the questions the board would have on the items presented.
But Ms. Val, if the chair of the board, cause it's the board's meeting, requests to have the executive director of pupil transportation, the executive director of food and nutrition services here just to stand at this podium and address our questions, why can that not be honored? You're our BA. You are not the new director of nutrition services. You are not the director of pupil transportation. With all due respect, I know they fall under your department, but it would have been nice to see their presence here. Oh, so you told them not to come? Okay, I'm just, okay.
What I said was that I saw your note in the, looking at the items, I believe that I was qualified to answer the questions. So I did not request directors to be here. That was a judgment call that I made. In the future, I will ensure that our directors are here. That's not a problem. They've been here in the past.
Can we do a survey at the schools to the students and determine the quality of food or what they expect to eat? Or on a scale of one to ten, how successful is your lunch? Or is it delicious? Or do you feel like it's a benefit to you? Cause I have a six year old that come home and say how disgusting this food is.
Or if we look at the lunch bags after lunch and you see all the food, these kids go back to the classroom without eating.
Kids come home hungry.
Yep. Listen, I, I've had three that went through it, I know. I packed their lunch every day and they shared. Any other questions, Board Members?
I would like a calendar from every school for the month on what they're supposed to be eating.
Do the vendors provide that, Val? That was a question I also had. I didn't, I forgot to please in the email. Like when my kids went to the school in NPS, there was a, a calendar that went home saying, Monday you'll get PB and J with carrots, milk, juice, water, Tuesday you'll get this, that, and, and we don't see that going home to any of these parents. Um, the question was for Ms. Wilson, Board Member Hill. Ms. Val? Ms. Val?
You're talking about the menu, not the calendar.
Yes, the menu, the menu.
So in terms of the menus, we do post our menus on our website. Um, we have in the past had vendors who are a vendor who would provide um menus pre-printed. Um, we are not typically doing that now because that's an expense to the, the district that um we felt would be served by putting menus up on our website.
Superintendent Leon.
Um, thank you, Madam President. I allowed this conversation to uh continue without interjecting because part of what I want everyone to understand is that everyone understand is that this isn't the Advisory Board of Newark. This is the Newark Board of Education. And there are processes that need to be in place while we're tra, we've, we're in a transition plan. And while you would have hoped that since February one, people understood that, you know, we're moving towards a fully locally controlled board, that everyone in the organization understands that. And it's understood in various degrees. There are people in the community who understand it in various degrees. It's my responsibility, now that I've allowed that conversation to take place and that I respect that it took place, is to put a couple of things into perspective for the board. So I think it makes a whole lot of sense to me for the resolution that we may not have necessarily done an incredible job for you all to give you the confidence, given the facts that you understand them as it relates to how we've provided food services during the course of this year and in years past. To put one thing into perspective, the purpose of the resolution is to actually make sure that the children are fed in our summer program and that starts in July. We run the risk of waiting until February eighteenth for y'all to taste something and then,
May.
Sorry, um, uh, May eighteenth, for them, for you to have it before the business committee after it reaches finance and then come before this board at the end of May for it to be. There's a bigger problem that I want y'all to understand, and that is that we're running the risk that on the first week of July, when the babies come actually to summer school, that there may not be food that is available. So I would make this statement. I would say move forward with the resolution as it is. Then put into play this whole tasting experience at the retreat. And then show the strength of the board and then we pull the contract if in fact we feel that somebody is not doing what they're supposed to do. That we would put a clause in the contract that says if we're dissatisfied with whatever it is that they're providing us, that we would pull it at the appropriate time. I think that we get to accomplish both tasks, that we'll make sure that Dr. McGill is present at the retreat if in fact she doesn't have a conflict on that day, since it is a Saturday, for her to present information uh before the board. I also think it's really important for the board to understand that while Dr. McGill is the food service director here in this school district and has been doing so, she's the president of the organization for all food, uh, uh, for the nutritional um, uh, organization in the whole state. There are fifty of them. She represents New Jersey. She doesn't, uh, only represent the food service program here. And she and I have had many conversations about the quality of the food service, the training of the staff. And I think that she would impress upon this board that she's not in disagreement with any of the conversation that she has actually uh heard and that she appreciates and would appreciate the commitment behind the board to actually allow her to do what she thinks needs to get done. Having said that, um, I would respectfully request that the board reconsider at least that resolution. The second resolution that deals with milk and um, uh.
Four point, fourteen point eleven.
Yes, that refers to um providing for our uh children when they return back to school. Then make that on us. We will wait until May. If that, nothing uh gets presented to you that is of your satisfaction, we'll address that one at that time. I would say defer the second one to uh May, uh, yeah, to May, but approve this one now so that we can actually move on uh the actual work. And then on May eighteenth, we will pull this one also. If in fact we don't feel that the quality of the food that we're uh gonna prepare for the students for the summer is worth it. I think that the risk of not being able to say, cause it, now we would, what, what occurs is the opposite. We begin to put undue pressure on the folks in the district that aren't delivering to you right now a shorter window of time. We're running the risk that then children aren't fed and uh I'm the one who's gonna have to deal parent, with parents in July about that.
Motion.
We heard, um, this is a motion to approve fourteen point seven only.
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Norton, second by Ms. Hill. Any further discussion by Board Members?
This is for a whole year. This is not just this, if I may Superintendent Leon or Val, this is for a whole year. It's not just for this summer program.
My stipulation to the resolution is that this is for, my concern is July. We can address it again for the rest of the school year if in fact we feel we need to do that at that time. All right, so um, so noted the resolution is what number, please?
Fourteen point seven.
So it would be to state for uh services uh beginning uh on July one, ending on August thirtieth.
Board Chair. Board Member Gomez.
So that will be changed?
Well, or is that what it states? Person, if the board member moving the motion agrees to modify it.
Can we modify it?
You can.
Well, actually it goes to Ms. Norton.
Right, cause she.
What is the modification?
The modification is that it would be effective July one to August thirtieth to cover the summer months.
Instead of a whole year.
Yes.
And if you look at the uh other resolution, what is it, Madam President?
The other one is fourteen point eleven.
So I would say the, the same holds true for that one. If you look at it, it would say that it's from the summer through the following school year. I would say from the summer months only to address our concerns. And then we will make sure that this is before the board through finance and then uh actually in the full board at the business and public meeting.
Counsel.
Yes.
Can I retract my motion and so it can include fourteen point seven and fourteen point eleven with the contingency between July and August?
You can uh modify the motion that you made.
I would like to modify the motion that I made to include fourteen point seven, fourteen point eleven.
The modification is to approve items fourteen point seven and fourteen point eleven, both of them to cover the time period only July one to August, I guess, thirty first. Um, motion by Ms. Norton. Ms. Hill, will you second that?
Yeah.
Any further discussion or any questions by Board Members as to what the motions are, motion is?
No, I just would.
Board Member Bledsoe.
I just would like to say thank you Superintendent Leon for that recommendation.
Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Abstain.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes, I accept his recommendation.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Mary Thomas?
Abstain.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yeah.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Norton.
Before I adjourn, I want to acknowledge a student. I just want to make sure this is the appropriate time.
We're done with all the vote action items, Mrs.? Okay, so we can move on to announcements. I'll let you, go ahead and then I'll say my announcements. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening.
No, older.
So Science Park High School senior Uzma, he placed fourth in United States at the National High School Debate Tournament, Tournament of Champions. Um, this is definitely a very exciting time. Last year, Brianna from Science Park also placed first and we sent Uzma and also some seniors, some students from Central High School and Uzma successfully placed fourth. And so we can just give him a round of applause. And definitely shout out to his um debate coach Jonathan Austin for the prep work that they have, um, that he has put into um Uzma and the rest of the debate team.
So um this Saturday, May fourth, from ten AM to three PM, um, at Roberto Clemente Elementary School located at two fifty seven Summer Avenue, we, uh, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce will be having their annual health fair there. Uh, there's gonna be free blood pressure, glucose screenings, dental hygiene, HIV, uh, cancer screenings. So for more information, you can call nine seven three four eight three four two nine zero. Also, May eleventh through the eighteenth, I'm sorry, May eleventh through May eighteenth is the Newark Spelling Beat. It's a scholarship for high school students only. Uh, please submit your applications online, which is norwkspellingbeat eventbreak.com. They are, uh, first prize is two thousand five hundred, second prize is a thousand, and the third prize is five hundred dollars. Any other Board Members with announcements?
Also.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Board Member Hill?
Oh, she was finished?
You were done.
No, I have one more, but you can go ahead, um, Board Member Hill.
Oh, so I just wanted to um, um, make an announcement, um, that me and Board Member Norton will be um judging the quick congressional art competition that's gonna be hosted in the Newark Museum next year, um, from some of our students throughout the um district. So um whoever wins the competition, their artwork will be placed in the State House for the next year. So that's just like, um, exciting. And so I also wanted to um make a comment to um, to the community engagement specialist, um, Ms. Preston over at Pechan Avenue. I just wanted to um touch on her concerns um as a board member in going into Pechan Avenue School and um being invited by her to attend their parent council meeting and have to sit in a meeting with, um, I would also like to acknowledge uh the head of our security, Mr. Bullock, who was also sitting in the meeting, um, you know, it was very disheartening to have to sit in a, a parent council meeting uh with three Newark police officers and uh head of our security here at the district for about four hours, four and a half hours where the parents had concerns with the principal. And it seemed to me like nothing was accomplished throughout the whole meeting and I just sat and I listened to both sides of the parties and it, it, it's just, it's a need over there at that school and I just wanted to, you know, put it on the record that somebody needs to go over there and address the issues that's going on with the principal and with the teachers and with the community engagement specialist. There's no reason why she has to feel as though she has no support from her principal. And you know, I, I've talked to her many a nights about different things that she could do over there at her school. And she's an awesome, awesome person, um, as a community engagement specialist. The parents in that parent, in, parent committee, you know, gave her the utmost respect, but it's just that they're getting so much pushback from the leadership at that school. And I just want that addition, uh, uh, issue to be, be addressed, you know, just to have three Newark police officers sitting in a parent council meeting. It was crazy.
Chair. And? Yes, and so as I've been promoting for the last two months, lifeguard season training is upon us. As a former lifeguard in the city of Newark, it's important that we have uh lifeguards, um, being able to work at our pools, um, at St. Peters, at JFK, at Rotunda, et cetera. And because of the seasonal position, we look to our high school students and our college students to become lifeguards. And so the next training is going to be held at Central High School. Go Blue Devils! And um, on, starting May sixteenth. And so if you are fifteen years or older, the fee is fifty dollars. Um, and if you have swimming background, I definitely encourage you to attend this training on May sixteenth at Central High School. Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, one more um thing. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge all of the young men that played in the mayor's um basketball tournament over spring break. It was very well attended. Also give a shout out to our newest um board member, Ms. Zoryan. She was also representing at the um game as well. And I would also just like to, to acknowledge Mr. Bradley sitting in the audience tonight and, you know, as he's gotten three college acceptance letters. So, you know, he's, he's our tenth board member. So I just wanted to say congratulations, Bradley.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe.
Uh, just really quickly, uh, I had the opportunity to attend the Newark, the Newark Evening Educational Center Honor Society induction ceremony. It was the first of its kind in the school's history. Uh, it was a great opportunity to address those honorees and I look forward to going back there. A lot of great things are happening at that school. Uh, secondly, I'd like to congratulate the new board members, Ms. Zoryan Murray Thomas, uh, Ms. Shavion Anderson and our returning board member, Mr. Octave Padilla. Uh, also like to thank Ms. Kim Gaddy and Leon for their service to, to our students in the city. Uh, and that's it. Congratulations to you, Madam Chair, and the Vice Chair being reappointed as the leadership.
Thank you. So on May first, eh, we're gonna have the, oh, sorry. Vice Chair Haynes.
So, um, listen to that. On the fifth of next month, it will be the start of the month of Ramadan for Muslims. I would love for everyone to take into consideration, especially our staff, that a lot of our children who are fasting will not want to participate in a lot of things that they may have been accustomed to doing. Please keep that into consideration and some of the young ladies who may not have been wearing hijab throughout the year. Now is the time to be culturally sensitive because this is, the lunar calendar is different than the Jordanian calendar and this month it starts on May fifth. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Just really quickly, um, Madam Chair, uh, Westside High School students won awards at the Penn Relays. Uh, Jacquet Cooker, uh, James Bell, Quincy Henley and Jared Gentles. Uh, I just wanna acknowledge those students. Uh, and also too, if we can continue the practice we've been doing the last couple of years, sending letters out uh to parents, uh, Muslim students so they can accommodate uh them during the month of Ramadan.
Absolutely. Board Member Bledsoe.
Madam Chair.
Just one more. Board Member Mary Thomas.
Uh, thank you all. Um, one more acknowledgement. Um, in addition to the young men um who came out victorious at the mayor's uh three on three tournament this year, there are, this past spring break, there also were young women mainly from Thirteenth Avenue School, Parent of Pride, who came out victorious and not only are undefeated right now at their school, but also came out undefeated during the three on three championships. I just wanted to acknowledge them.
Any other Board Member? Motion. So Wednesday, May first, we will have the superintendent's roundtable report out and that is, will be at Rutgers University at the Roberson Building. Please try to attend that. It's gonna be a very informative session there. Six PM, thank you.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Norton to adjourn. Second by Mr. Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Good night. Thank you, everyone, for attending.